All right, we have returned to open session. At this time, is there any public comment?
Oh, cute.
Okay. Is there a motion to open the public hearing for the fiscal year 2020 budget?
It's a move.
Second.
Margie, can you call the roll?
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Versatti?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right. This time, do we have any discussion on the budget?
No.
No? Okay.
I don't think so.
Okay. Then, is there a motion to close the budget hearing?
It's a move.
Second.
Margie, can you call the roll?
Mr. Versatti?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Motion carried.
We're good?
Nope.
Yes.
All right, we're good. At this time, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
No.
All right. If not, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
All right. I am excited to start superintendent's report by introducing Laura McMahon and Mr. Pete Gatz to introduce us to some Central students that are here to talk about something going on at Central School.
Good evening, everybody. It's always nice to see such a wonderful crowd here for the board meeting. I think Central always seems to draw a pleasant number of families to see these wonderful presentations. It's always interesting to try to bring something forward, to share with you that's going on in the schools, especially so early in the school year. But I worked with Laura McMahon, and she worked with some of the students in her classroom to put something together that I think you guys will really enjoy. So I'm going to turn things over to Laura and our students.
All right, good evening, guys. Thank you so much for having us. We're really excited to be here tonight. And I'm going to turn it right over to the students.
We have been loving our daily mindfulness meditations this year in room 104, and we can't wait to share more details with you tonight. Please enjoy the following video to give you a glimpse of what mindfulness looks like in our classroom. You'll also see some student interviews. Finally, we'll end with the student present- presenter.
My first thing was watching because I wouldn't carry out lunch. It was fast and everything was really loud when you come up and have to focus on words because it's really hard to do that. So please calm down. It's really helpful.
Mindfulness is basically a way to relax. I definitely believe in meditation too because it's definitely like you're saying to yourself that you can't do this, you just need to calm down. So if you're like, I think it's a little bit more of a...
I like mindfulness because it like, it would get rid of, I mean, what my thoughts, they're funny. It's less very like, um, every break, just calm down, relax. It's really good.
Um, I like mindfulness because, um, there's a part of my... So I moved the last year back and I love to do some of that, to move aside and have like, put it in a way that I'm just...
Uh, I like mindfulness just after, like, we said we've gone through this fun project and I come back and relax and then I also like to...
Mindfulness helps me because when you come to the room and you're laying down, you just get to have, take your mind off things and really think about that much. And like, you're done, make you go back to work, you might have to brush and be able to start again more focused and first you relax. I'm on, just very clear.
Mindfulness is like a time to like relax and you can start off fresh, like, like you can be like new again.
I like mindfulness also because it really clear all my thoughts and it just give a bit of energy to my bad thoughts and anything that I'm working about.
Mindfulness helps me just after recess or listening to literature, uh, on a home. So, and then I calm down and get to the rest of the day. I like because you like take a test or something to really like just have a brain reading because your mind is still kind of anxious and cares about maybe something that will change and you have to take that for a period. So I think it's important to become more relaxed and...
Uh, I also like mindfulness because it's nice and it's as from really anxious when it started, but keep it calm and it kind of calms you down.
The thing I love is that you're talking a lot too, that that habit has always been fairly, I mean, you can't even worry about it. I'm like, let's cheer up, drink and sleep until I'm like, my head was like squeezing to the floor, sleeping, laughing, just still laugh. By the time, like, up to your shoulders, you don't really want to go higher because we're all just sleeping till it's...
The reason why I like to lay down and check my for mindfulness is because that it's like I'm like in bed and it's more easier for me to close my eyes because when I'm tired, I go to sleep fast because it's really easy for me to close my eyes and relax. I like to sleep because it's more comfortable.
And so I just like when people just like have like that, um, like they have a focus of like what they're saying or like kind of calming down, it's not like, that just kind of like just boring, like people are like worried.
Thank you to Mr. Smith for making our video. In our class, every day after lunch, we do mindfulness. When we come into the room, we find comfortable spots like our couches and our flexible seating options. Some people like to lay and some people like to sit. We do mindfulness because lunch can be chaotic, especially because I do patrol with all the little first graders. Doing mindfulness after lunch helps relax me and calm my mind, and it kind of gives me a fresh start, and it prepares me for the rest of my day and gives me a good attitude.
I like mindfulness because it relaxes you after lunch. Lunch can sometimes be loud and my, in your mind races, wondering what's going on. Once you get back, mindfulness helps you calm down from all of the racing things in your mind. If you're grumpy, it can help you to be happier.
I was introduced to mindfulness by my mom last year. I also learned how to use it in school. This past summer, when I took a summer class with Ms. McMahon, we had lots of fun. I was ecstatic to be in Ms. McMahon's classroom this year. I continue using this skill. Mindfulness techniques have taught me how to calm down and to get focused.
When Ms. McMahon was out yesterday for a training, the class missed mindfulness so much, we decided to do it ourselves. I volunteered to lead the class in mindfulness, just like Ms. McMahon does every day. We tried it and the class loved it so much. Now Lola and I would like to lead you in a mindfulness meditation so that you can experiment, experience the benefits of mindfulness.
Please sit back in your chairs and get comfortable. Start to close your eyes and focus on your soft, slow mindful breaths. Breathe in through your nose and out through your mouth. Continue to focus on your breath and feel, feel how it fills your belly.
Now, you may choose to rest your hands face up to absorb more energy from the room. You may also choose to rest your hands face down to feel more grounded. You may also choose to rest your hands on your belly and, or your chest to feel you're breathing more deeply.
As you continue to focus on your soft, slow mindful breaths, think about a time that you felt truly happy. Picture where you were, who you were with, and how you felt. Transport yourself back to that time and enjoy the moment. Let that happiness fill your heart. Take that happiness with you through the rest of the board meeting.
Now, let's take the last final three breaths as a group. Deep breath in through your nose and ocean breath out through your mouth. Take another deep breath in through your nose and ocean breath out through your mouth. Last deep breath in through your nose and ocean breath out through your mouth. Now start to flutter your eyes open slowly.
That was your happiness meditation. We hope you enjoyed it.
Um, I would like my mom to say a few words.
Hi, I'm Gideon's mom, Ms. Bradford. I was introduced to mindfulness as a technique for my clients who have anxiety, depression, and we brought it home. And my son had no idea that it was mindfulness until he took the summer school program. And he was like, wait, we're doing this at home? And it was like simple little things, like we were doing gratitude conversations during dinner. We were thinking about what was the best thing. And at night, we would do the meditation. So it was just a form of kind of having him present at the present time, forgetting about the past and not worrying about the future so he can stay grounded. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time this evening. Does anyone have any questions for our student presenters?
How do you guys keep from falling asleep?
Honestly, we don't know.
Is this, I mean, you guys are going to continue to do then after school is over in the summer and you think you'll continue with it?
Probably. Yeah.
Yeah, it helps a lot with your like, it helps you get through the day and it just helps you focus on what you have to do.
It just keeps you calm through the day. So like, like I said, if you're grumpy, it could help you like calm down through everything that's going on. Like, if you have any situation, it could just help you like let them float away.
So outside of Gideon, because I know you do this at home, have any of you been like in a situation outside of school where you felt like mindfulness might, might help you?
Uh, yes. Well, I just do it during the night, so.
Like while you're trying to go to sleep?
Yeah.
Well, that's great. It helps?
Yeah.
Great. Are you teaching your parents?
Uh, yeah.
They're nodding, yes.
Do you guys feel like your classroom has a better connectiveness or vibe when you're done compared to if you don't do it?
Yeah, I think we do because like, it's usually like when we were younger, it was about like who we sat next to and stuff. And now it doesn't really matter, like we just sit around the room and it's like...
Well, for those of us that are first grade moms, we love you and appreciate you patrol people. Because I know it's stressful, so thank you to lots of you here that are patrol members. Thank you very much.
Yeah, this is very nice, yeah. I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming here and all that with us. Really appreciate it.
Seems like a great and very calming program.
So cute.
All right, so I'll continue on. It's always hard to follow that, but not... Very happy place, very calm. So one of the things I'm sharing with you as part of the superintendent's report is a draft of goals for the 2019-2020 school year. And as part of this, really, I'm, I'm interested in getting some feedback too, if there's more conversation, more discussion that we've wanted to have. I know these goals grow from our strategic plan and our continuity from last, last year's goals. So this is the continued work of the district. And I, I know in some ways the board hasn't had enough opportunity. We had a couple of opportunities this summer that were busied with facilities work and other more pressing priorities perhaps, but we know that this, having our identified goals is critical. So wanted the board to be able to take a look at it and gather some additional feedback from all of you about even just next process steps potentially. We've kind of talked about either endorsing them, you know, sort of revising them, or even scheduling a special meeting if they're, if we wanted to get into greater detail with them.
I have a general comment, which is that seemingly most of the items on here are not, are not really goals. It seems that they're more action items that are potentially aimed at achieving some goal, but the goal itself, the goals themselves are not spelled out. So for example, we take the, just to randomly take the first one, continue to pilot new, new units of study of K5 science and social studies. That's not, that's not a goal, that's a, that's just a, an item on a to-do list. So, and I, I do think it's useful to have explicitly articulated goals. Say the goal, the goal for this year is going to be, let's say, we're going to get all of our facilities projects finished on time and on budget. We're going to, let's say, you know, increase our rate of literacy and numeracy in our student population from what they were last year. Those are the kind of things I think that are real goals that have measurable outcomes. Whereas these, these items seem more not like goals, they more seem like, I'm not saying they're bad, I'm just saying they're, they're just not goals. They're like, you know, these are the things we're going to do as opposed to.
So, in my three years here, we've done three different ways with board input. And again, last year, we went to kind of this, these more shortened versions, more succinct, you know, they are not the, sort of the full statement and so, for example, I continue to improve, you know, or pilot new units of study in K5 science and social studies in order for, you know, for, you know, X to occur. But I think that's, I appreciate the comment, Jeff, because I think that's one of the, one of the, even the conversations we had last time around is what level of detail do we want in sort of our, our broad district goals?
Right, and I think that's a good question, but I guess, I guess my, my basic point is that these are actions, not goals. So if I, let's say, my goal is to run a 10-minute mile. That's my goal. I'm going to run a 10-minute mile by, you know, next summer or something like that. The action that might be associated with that is I'm going to start, you know, training and run three miles a day or whatever. Who knows?
Yeah.
It seems like what we have here is the action. I'm going to run three miles a day or...
Right, and I think the goal is...
As opposed to saying my goal is I'm going to run a 10-minute mile.
Yeah. We need to expand the opportunities for, for as many classes as we can to pilot.
Yeah, but I guess, but I guess, I guess to, to Jeff's point though, I think as a board, I mean, like Martha's mentioned, we've gone back and forth on like how we want to address this. And I, I agree with you, Jeff, that these need to be a little more specific. I mean, but I think as a board though, we need to decide, do we want these more specific? Because this is sort of how we've done it in the past. And do we want, do we want to keep doing it this way or do we want to change it and be more specific and say, you know, we're going to like maintain a, a, like a budget balance of like X percent? So those are, I guess, I think as a board, we need to have that discussion before we can decide on what goals are going to be.
Right, there's a level of specificity in the, in the, well, you're correct, in the, in the goals, but I guess, I guess my, that's, that's consistent with what I'm saying, which is that we sort of, to me, it's like the board, one of the, one of the prime functions of the board is to set very large goals for the district, measurable goals, and say, here's the goal for this year, here's the goal for the next five years, whatever. And that's, that's not this.
Right, but I guess the thing is, we've gone back and forth before and this is, I mean, we had sort of goal, general goal, like sort of these, as you would say, actions for like last year.
Right.
And so I guess what I'm saying is we need to have a discussion, I think as a board, is like, do we want to keep these sort of more actionable, like these action, because I almost consider this as like a mission statement than...
But these are almost administrative backwards, in my opinion, and we just need to go backwards a bit, not backwards in theory, but backwards in our global look at it and say, what do we, what do we want? What does this mean?
Right, and I guess...
What does it mean? It's like a thesis statement versus your general...
I think there was an intent over the summer to have a retreat-style meeting of the board where we could have some of these discussions. I think I just heard that we would like a discussion. Is that, is that something we should consider?
I mean, I think that's a, that's a, that's a sort of a worry the thing for the board to do on an annual basis. And I know that you're, you know, planning to do that later in the year, but that might be sort of, which is good to do, but that might be sort of, you know, in a way, it might be better to have a discussion earlier than that too, because you don't want to wait till halfway through the year is over before you formulate your goals, you know?
Yeah, yeah, definitely so.
Right, and that's why I wanted to get something out here. And this, this format does mimic the format we used last year, which had been, again, it's kind of a, with input from the board. We had, we had shortened it up quite a bit. We had sort of shifted in style. So I think, I think you're right, there's, what I'm hearing is there's sort of both process, more discussion, and certainly then the identification of the specific goals. And the meeting perhaps you're referring to later in the year is Illinois, with the Illinois Board of...
Yes. Self-obsessive.
I don't know if we're doing any of that in that session or not, but...
Right. I do think it like makes us realize that having a meeting in the summer about this is, I know that just didn't, wasn't able to happen this year, but I think that meeting is really important for this. I think it's just...
It was very useful when we did that before, those of us that were...
But I think that even if we can't have a special meeting for that, I think even having this in either in a committee of the whole meeting or else in a general board meeting, if we've got a lighter schedule, I think it's a, you know, very good thing to have the conversation and, you know, in those, in those contexts as well.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Is there any timeframe or window that is something that would help you out, Martha, in terms of having these get to a more finalized state?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, certainly for the next year, I think, just appreciate the conversation that it really is helpful to have, you know, really an identified, targeted, specialized meeting with, with just the focus on goals. You know, the strategic plan identifies, right, those very broad goals. We're moving into kind of final year of the strategic plan. I think that there's enough direction certainly for me to continue to move forward. We, you know, I mean, each administrator has identified goals and we work broadly within these, you know, these, these identified areas. So again, I want, I think it's more of the, I want the board to feel comfortable, the board to feel like there's been the opportunity to have the input as needed.
I'm sort of looking at, I mean, I've looked at some of these and I'm looking at them again. I guess I'm wondering, can we be, could, would it help if, because this is something that would be actionable, like continue to pilot new units of study, could we maybe, and again, I'm just throwing these numbers out there, like continue to pilot like five new units of study in K through five science and social studies? Can we just sort of tweak these a little to make them more quantifiable? Because I mean, I think these are good goals. I mean, I think these are good things that we want to strive for, but if we can make it more quantifiable, that, you know, we're going to do X units of study, we're going to provide teachers like X unit, X opportunities.
No, I think you're right. I think there are, there are two things that I think would be, would be helpful. One is to have more detail in the action items, and then I think also having specific goals, you know, whatever, whatever they might be at whatever level, you know, that are clear, clear goal basically, distinguishing the action.
Yeah, it's hard to tell if it's, if this is for all the schools or just one school, and it'd be nice for us to know that all the schools are, and I'm sure they are, but that all the schools will get to pilot and how we want to describe that expansion, I guess.
Well, perhaps then it makes sense to take a look at committee of the whole meetings in the near future, the next few months, to see if there's a meeting coming up where we have a little bit more time, where we have a lighter agenda without as much on the docket, where we could have an extended discussion on this, if that makes sense?
I think it does make sense, yeah.
I mean, only, I guess, give us some homework. I mean, would it be worthwhile for us to like take these back, think about goals in the sections, and then filter them through Martha, and Martha then can compile them?
Yeah, I'm certainly open to that. But I just encourage people to look at the previous year and you'll sort of see how we modified our, our format to make them...
And I think as Martha mentioned, I think the overarching goals are, the categories here are, are the ones that came out of the strategic plan. And so those are, those are sort of like the high-level goals, but you know, they sort of, you know, those are modified, you know, as time goes on, they're not exactly the same as they were in 2015. And so, you know, we can reclarify them, or maybe some other things have moved to the front of the, you know, queue.
You know, I think the input would be great, and you know, it's possible if we look at the October Cal, I need to look at sort of our proposed agendas and checking in with different committee chairs if there's other input that we could, you know, perhaps be able to identify that for more discussion. So I think that'd be great.
And I guess, could we then be more actionable, more specific? Can we maybe give Martha feedback within a week then so that she can?
Sure.
Is that reasonable?
That'd be great.
Is anybody comfortable with that?
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. And then I have one other, one other item on the superintendent's report, and that is continuing to move, bring forward the facilities advisory committee agendas and information. Joel and Linda, if you want to add any detail to the conversation. So we met on September 12th. I'm ready for the agenda to open here on my boardroom. And really, the major focus of the agenda was to look at this design development phase that we're in, really nearing the, the tail end of what we, we consider design development, making sure architects are ready to move our drawings to what they consider construction documents. So we had fairly detailed conversation that included the principals as well as our administrative team members that are part of the facilities advisory committee, and spent a fair amount of time talking about all four of the elementary schools in terms of the proposed design ideas and in terms of other sort of the future goals and needs that are identified on the agenda. I would say that the majority of the agenda focused really around number one, which was the design development review and discussion. So, and again, that continued even today. Our architects has to come in and have yet one more meeting, one-on-one with each of the principals. So they are getting down to what I'll describe as kind of the nitty-gritty, where do they want casework and, you know, doors and et cetera, et cetera. So we're, we're very, very close, and I know we're going to talk later on the agenda about next steps in terms of construction management, et cetera. So wanted to continue to keep you updated. Linda or Joel, anything else you'd want to add?
I, the committee was given the opportunity to see some of the, as it says, design development, that meant some of the thoughts that the architects looked at in terms of exterior renderings and materials. And it's, it's very obvious through both the meeting discussion and some discussion I had afterwards that the architect has spent a lot of time thinking about what they're doing and layouts and color and trying to develop something that reflects or meets meshes with the existing building while still providing more modern light and openness, especially at Ames specifically, but Hollywood too, the multipurpose room. Just, I want to emphasize, the architect has spent, has obviously spent, in my eyes, sorry, that's biased, but in my eyes, some good quality time developing and assessing and trying to present a good product for us to build.
Yeah, we actually looked at brick samples in terms of getting into some of the, the very specific detail, so.
Oh, and I should say, the, the architect is going to continue meeting and coordinating with the village to make sure that the process of getting approvals is smooth and the village being both building side as well as historic and preservation.
No, Joel summed it up nicely. Okay. All right, that's the superintendent's report.
Right. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. There a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We missed it.
We missed?
We missed a part, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we did.
Unless I was going in later, but...
Yeah.
Under Martha's report? Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Sorry, I had it linked to the facilities advisory. So we, we do have it later on the agenda, but I did want to just add that one of the conversations at facilities advisory just is continuing to look at the, the property of Hollywood School specifically and our goal of separating play and parking. So part of our ongoing board conversation... So part of our ongoing board conversation has been a community forum and an opportunity to have more community engagement, more community feedback, specific to some ideas that are still not fully defined and not fully formed around the best way or our viable ways to separate play and parking at Hollywood School while doing the addition. So I do have that also later on the agenda, but if people just tend to take a look at that, thank you.
That's good to bring that up.
Yes, so we can kind of move along and then revisit, and I think would be the best way to do that.
Okay. All right, we'll do take two. Next, we have approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Actually, one item I'd like to actually discuss further, if we could.
Okay.
Don't we have to read it first and then see if we want anything?
Yeah, you need to, Joel.
All right, then, in the interest of expediency, our former secretary will read the consent agenda.
So tonight's consent agenda includes minutes of the regular business meeting of August 21st and the committee of the whole of September 4th, the personnel report, the payables pre-lists from August 30th and September 18th of this year, and a number of policies. These include policy 2110, which I'm not quite sure what that title is. Thank you. Nope, there's no name there. It has a name.
Qualifications, Terms and Duties of Board Officers.
Thank you.
Wow, sorry about that.
I hit a miss. Which includes an exhibit for guidance for board member communications, including email use, five colon 180, temporary illness or temporary incapacity, six colon 40, curriculum development, six colon 340, student testing and assessment program. And then those were policies for more extensive review, and then there were policies needing just a five-year review. The five-year review items include policy two colon 240, board policy development, three colon 60, administrative responsibility of the building principal, four colon 90, activity funds, five colon 35, compliance with the Fair Labor Standards Act, five colon 40, communicable and chronic infectious disease, always exciting, five colon 130, responsibilities concerning internal information, six colon 110, programs for students at risk of academic failure and/or dropping out of school and graduation incentives program, seven colon 170, damage to school property, two colon 220, board of education meeting procedure, five colon 330, sick days, vacation, holidays and leaves. And then the EIS, this is not a policy, this is just a report, the EIS Administrator and Teacher Salary and Benefits Report, 2019.
All right. Are there any items on the consent agenda that we would like, any board member would like to remove for further discussion?
Yes, could we remove policy six colon 340, student testing and assessment program?
I was going to ask the same thing.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. So let's see, so then we should vote on the consent agenda and then come back to that policy?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So then let's go back. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended? Someone?
Second.
Margie, can you call the roll?
Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Ms. Murphy?
Hi.
Mr. Muirhead?
Hi.
Mr. Versati?
Hi.
Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Motion carried.
All right. All right, so, would you like to discuss on that, the policy?
Yes, I apologize if, I think we probably have talked about this, but I must have missed it, but there is apparently a question in the, in the policy that allows you, allows you to add the words "and" to the community in reference to disseminating the results of the standardized test, the state standardized test. And it looks like we've elected no here, at least as is presented in the consent agenda. I'm just wondering if someone can refresh my memory about that, why we chose no, because it's not obvious to me why we'd have done that.
I think there was some discussion on what that really meant.
Yeah.
Because we do post that, I mean, we do have that information posted already on our site.
Yep.
And so I thought, basically, the way we're looking at it is what we do currently do is sufficient for that. So I guess there were some questions around what does posting it to large as a community mean, and so because of what we do now, we thought that was sufficient.
Okay, I also missed that, and to me, it seems like we would add the words "and" to the community, because that is what we are doing. By posting it on the website, that puts it out to the community and not just parents and guardians.
Right, so, yeah, I mean, we, exactly as David said, it is on the website, so is, and I would say that is posting it to the community.
So then there's no harm in changing it to, to add to the community, since we do that anyway, right? There's no harm in doing that, and maybe just, maybe appears to be slightly more transparent, I don't know. Because you're right, we do it anyway, and it's also on the state websites, unlike it's, we're hiding results, I mean.
And often printed in the local paper, yeah, so. So I think if the board would prefer to say "and" to the community, and I think we could just-
Do it now.
-make the motion to approve it, to add that.
I think it looks strange to put no in the community.
So I move that we amend that policy to add the words "and" to the community.
Second.
All right. Margie, can you call the roll?
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Ms. Murphy?
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Mr. Versati?
Hi.
Mr. Muirhead?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Motion carried.
That makes me laugh.
Sorry, Wesley, I'm not laughing at you.
It's always very sudden.
Yeah.
Okay, next is the Riverside Education Council. Anything from the rec tonight? All right, if not, next then is board member comments. Did a board member attended a function lately?
I attended the parent night at Central, and that was, you know, adorable to be in their classroom and to see what they're doing, and I really appreciate the teacher going through what they're going to be learning. It was fairly specific. It wasn't just generics. It was, okay, we're going to be learning, you know, these specifics in math, and here's what we're doing in reading, and I felt like we were in class. Honestly, it was very, very in-depth. I appreciate you doing that for us, so it was nice.
Very good to hear.
I wasn't able to-
I'll have to add for Ames as well.
Maybe be done, I don't know.
Were you remote or in person?
As in person for Alex.
Good.
I wasn't able to attend the Hauser one, but my husband did and said it was fantastic, and came home with the bullet points of things he wanted to review with me, so I guess he was engaged.
He does.
All those are good things to hear. All right. If there are no further board member comments, next up are the committee reports versus the policy committee.
Oh, we've just approved a number of policies, and there's a couple more that we'd like to approve as well, so we can table that until later, if that's all right.
All right. And Joel, the facilities committee?
As noted, we had the meeting last week. We also are about to, there's a bid out for construction managers, and a limited number of firms have been asked to present proposals to us, and there's going to be a winnowing of them, and then interviews next October 3rd. And we will look at the proposals with a very rigorous set of criteria that Ramesh has helped us develop, and then select a construction manager. That contractor, that proposal text is in the, is in the board book.
It's later on in the meeting.
The other thing is that, as part of the meeting last week, we realized, or it was noted, that we're going to have to start looking at playgrounds and any kind of a playground committee fairly soon, because that's also a little bit of a process to select what exactly the district wants in terms of playground equipment and designs, and we want to engage the parents and students fairly quickly.
All right. And next is finance committee.
Jeff? Thanks, Dan. Yeah, I met last week with Mr. Fitton and Martha. Do we, just to, just to have any last conversation, if necessary, about the budget, which we are going to vote on tonight. And we also had a brief conversation about the early learner's tuition, which is a new business item we will get to later in the, in the meeting.
Okay. And the personnel committee?
Did not meet.
No update at this time?
All right. And the education committee?
Yeah, we heard from Ms. Dolzel. We heard from several, several different bests. It's really, it's the beginning of the year, so we got to hear about what teachers were learning when they come, they're mentoring each other, and really good start. It sounds like everyone's really smoothly transitioned, and our summer school, we had an update, and it's thriving numbers with a really rich amount of classes. So it sounds like it was a great summer, and the kids were excited to be back. So we'll be hearing more about, more specifics about how they're doing in the classroom, but it's a really good start.
Very good. Okay, next up is old business, and the presentation of the 2019-2020 legal budget.
Here's- Hey, Don, can you switch it to the issue?
Oh, yeah. Let's review last year's. It's a minor detail.
It's just minor, right?
It's gone up a little. Thank you. So this is an updated schedule that we've talked about, I think in April was the first time. But these are, so tonight we had our hearing, and the other items that have been completed are listed up there in red and come down to the 9/18, and that's present the final budget. Hopefully, it's adopted tonight, and then in the next few weeks, I'll take care of filing it. I was going to take some time, a little time to go through details of the budget. I took one of the reports that's in your packet and kind of break it down and talk about the different columns in it. This is where we, we ended last year, so June 30th or July 1st, fund balances. And the way this report works is the first six are operating funds, and the last two are non-operating funds. The, so we're starting the year with a, before the audit, so it could change lately, an operating fund balance of $32,826,224. And then the two non-operating funds are just under $3 million there. So we've got an overall fund balance, operating and non-operating, of $35.8 million to start out this year. So that's the starting point for this year's budget. The first column, or the column we just added there, we budget a revenue amount in each of these funds, and we've got a, on this, we have, for the operating, a total operating revenue of $28.8 million. And then the way that revenue breaks down is 86% of our operating revenue is from property taxes, 10% of it's from state and federal sources, and then the last, some of the other local is miscellaneous, like interest income and other things that are local as opposed to from the state or federal government. So on this, in the revenues, we assumed a 2% increase in property tax versus last year's budget. And if you compare to how we finished the year, it's, I don't use an increase in that. So we kind of beat last year's number by 2%, but I went back to use a conservative number and increased the budget instead of working from the actual. So I'd expect that we surpassed that revenue number when the, when the year's over. See, the non-operating revenue, there's, we don't levy in those funds right now, so it's just the money that's sitting in there, the $3 million, and the interest we hope to get off that. And you can tell that's pretty conservative, too. We should be able to be a little bit better. So also, in each fund, we have to budget the expenditures, so the column I just brought up there is budget expenditures by fund. And out of the $27.2 million in expenditures, in operating expenditures, salaries and benefits are nearly 70% of it, purchase services and supply is about 20%, and then the remaining is payments to LADZI or operating capital and equipment within our O and M budget, not the big capital projects, they're down towards the bottom. So when we developed the, this budget, we looked really closely at FTE. As you can see, salaries and benefits are the biggest part of it. So during the process, we kind of justify each position, and we were able to eliminate almost two full-time equivalents. So that helps to balance this budget, but if we can maintain that over, when we do the projections 10 years out, we'll see some savings all the way through. In addition to managing FTE, each administrator manages a portion of the services and supplies budget, and the principals and the people with the other administrators were able to reduce the spending in their budget, in their budgets, over 5% in total. So not a huge part of the budget, but we do look at every, every line item. Just want you to know that included in, in these expenditures is $1 million for maintenance and repair projects, and that'll keep us moving on the long-range plan and on anything that comes up during the year. So we're, we're covered there. Down here, non-operating expenditures, we have close to half a million in capital projects to keep this process going, and then we'll make the eighth payment out of 10, and the $10 million in debt certificates from 2011. So after we make the payment that's in this budget, we'll owe $2.3 million and make two more payments, so we'll be finished with that by FY '22, so two more years after this The column I just added there shows the difference between revenues and expenditures. And so if you look at the operating funds, we're $1.6 million that we'll be adding to operating fund balance, and then that's offset by the payments to that and spending in capital with very little revenue coming in. So that offsets, and we end up with a balanced budget between operating and non-operating. We don't have any transfers planned in this budget, so then the, those differences, take the beginning balance on the left, and those differences and add them, and we project the ending fund balance all the way to the right. So again, the operating surplus will add $1.6 million to the operating fund, and the non-operating will, will be spending it. So basically balanced budget, and you can see the beginning fund balance down in the bottom left, $35.8 million. Everything happens for the year with a balanced budget, and you end up with the same in the fund balance at the end. So that $1.6 million, when we add it to the operating fund balance, we're expecting to be at $34.4 million. And in last February- And in last February, we did projections, five-year projections, and then we took them out, kind of just extrapolated that out to get 10 years. And the blue line there represents a 40% fund balance policy, so the required 40% that is in our policy. And so the red line is the projections and the operating fund balance projected when we really looked at this in February. And we expect to, the fund balance to grow a little bit over four or five years, and then we're anticipating expenditures to exceed revenues as we get further out. And it's not as easy to project, but we're being very conservative with that. If you can see the little green line up there, since we met in February, I, we got to head our audit done from the previous year. And we have some preliminary numbers for the year that just closed, plus this budget. So we're looking at the ending FY '20 operating fund balance to be $1.4 million higher than we had thought in February. So the difference between that green number there, it says $34.4 million, and the approximately $11 million, that's 40%. There's $23.5 million in the operating fund balance above the policy. And what I plan to do by the December board meeting is take this budget when it's approved and then kind of run that out for 10 years, extend that green line. If we added 10 balanced budgets, then the number way to the right should be $1.4 million higher. We'll maintain that little increment that we gained. Any questions on the budget?
Do you think that $1.4 million is sustainable over the 10 years that continue? Are you hopeful?
So if we could balance...
If you continue that trend, yeah.
Yeah. I don't think we would add to it, but I think we could balance the budget as we know.
Right.
I mean, we'll project expenditures going up, but when you get there, you don't let it just keep going.
No.
If there's a deficit, so then we'll add some effort to it to get it back in line.
Thank you.
Sure.
On the operating side, we ended up with more money than we anticipated.
But we also spent more money than we anticipated on the non-operating funds, right? Because we bought the, this doesn't include the two property purchases for that, for the last year, is that right?
Yeah. So we spent a bit more in capital in the big project area, but we underspent in other areas to not only offset it, but to also add to the fund balance, operating fund balance.
In these projections, taking into account the, like, two years out, that we're going to now, we're not going to be having that debt service payment anymore.
That's already factored inside. And sorry, it's not easy to read up there with those two boxes.
22, right?
The operating funds that will need to be moved to pay for the last couple of years.
And you said 2022, it'll be finished?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the 2019-2020 Legal Budget as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Ms. Murphy?
Hi.
Mr. Muirhead?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Mr. Barsati?
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Okay, next is Exhibit 730 E1 Class Size Policy.
Yes, I'm sorry. We cleaned this up. I don't know if you've had, everyone's had a chance to take a look at it, but we've essentially moved the policy out of like identifying how big the classes should be. We're keeping that as an administrative. We will be focusing though during the, throughout the year of like bringing class size discussion up at certain points in the year. But I mean, I think this is much more straightforward. I like this policy. It takes the sort of, I don't like to say the rigor, but it takes the requirements of having a certain class size policy that we haven't really adhered to in the past out and leaving that as an administrative policy. Any questions or...
I think, David, when, I think this is well-written, and I think when you pair it or combine it with the two policies to follow, it really does give a good picture of what we're trying to do in terms of class sizes as well as paying attention to the many different things that affect this, the neighborhood schools, class sizes, finances. I think you have to look at them together, but it works.
And those other parts don't have any revision, but we agree that it was helpful to look at them as one can buy a piece of information.
That's exactly why I'm saying that, Martha, is as, when you look at all three together, that gives you our goal.
I think when we have those reports, that we should continually see these together and let the public see them together, it's very, very useful.
Definitely would want to maintain transparency. All right, is there a motion to approve Exhibit 730 E1 Class Size Policy?
So moved.
Second.
Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Barsati?
Hi.
Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Ms. Murphy?
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Mr. Muirhead?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Okay, next is Policy 2140 Communications to and From the Board.
Again, this is, was the whole, we discussed this in the last committee meeting, I mean, the last board meeting. We've done some cleanup, I guess. Is there any, any questions or comments on this?
You know, David, I'm reading this one, and I'm, sorry, I'm skimming back into it. We'd used the word implicate, and we had changed that wording.
Right.
And it's still in this one.
That was a strange choice.
It's in this one. So we put the wrong version up here.
Yeah, I was trying to figure that out.
Sorry, yeah.
I could tell I was looking at not the one board.
I don't know why that word jumped back out at me. It would, I would again recommend that we approve it as we had presented it at the meeting, our last meeting.
Right. I don't know if I'm going to read any important differences since you have it there, Dave.
I don't, I actually, I have a hard copy on my desk at home.
Oh, I thought you had it with you.
No, I was looking at, I didn't read it in here. I printed out what we had, and so I read that one.
Okay. If you'd like to move on to the others, I'll, I think I can find it here in my pile.
Okay. We'll move on then to number four, that's Policy 2230 Public Comments at Board of Education Meetings.
This one, I do think the attorney did a really good job just sort of clean, cleaning this up and streamlining it, making it more relevant than the one that was originally presented. So I guess, is there any, does anyone have any discussions on it or questions?
No.
I think it looks, I think it looks good.
All right, is there a motion to approve Policy 2230 Public Comments at Board of Education Meetings?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Need a policy for the, who wins the second contest?
Next meeting, Dan, next meeting.
Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Muirhead?
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Mr. Barsati?
Hi.
Ms. Murphy?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Are we ready to go back to the previous one?
I cannot remember the word that we...
I don't see implicate, I don't know where...
It's in the bold. Email and other electronic communications among board members may be subject to the Illinois Open Meetings Act. For example, contemporaneous interactive email communications between a majority of a quorum of board members discussing school business would violate the OMA. May be subject to, right, rather than implicate.
Right, it's just more of a finess than I...
Yeah, so that would, if we could approve it with the language of may be subject to as a substitute. Yes.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Is everybody comfortable with this?
Does anyone make a motion to make that change?
A motion to change the word implicate to subject to.
So moved. So, sorry. It's like, I don't know what's next.
All right. Margie, please call the roll.
Ms. Murphy?
Hi.
Mr. Muirhead?
Hi.
Mr. Barsati?
Hi.
Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Okay, next is District 96 Construction Manager Selection.
We have Ramash here to give us an overview of that and answer any questions the board might have.
I'm here. I'm going to elaborate on what Joel just mentioned earlier. So on September 9th, we issued the request proposal to five construction management companies. And about two hours later, one of the firms declined to propose, but we immediately went ahead and substituted that firm with another company. So as of right now, we have five firms that are confirmed to submit their proposals to us. On Thursday, that was the 12th, we issued addendum number one, which had contract information, which was missing from the initial RFP. And we expect all the proposals to come in on the 24th. They will be submitted electronically, after which we're going to assemble a select committee to go through and review the proposals. And a final decision will be made at an interview that we plan to conduct on October 3rd in the afternoon, following which a selection will be made and presented to the board. That's what we found out right now.
Any questions? No? I don't know. Your idea? Yes?
Okay.
And next, we have further discussion on District 96 Offer to Purchase Hollywood Citizens Association Property.
So I just wanted to keep the board informed and certainly invite any additional conversation if needed. And then I'll refer you up to the, to the item under the superintendent's report about the forum. So we still don't have an official word back from the Hollywood Citizens Association about our offer to purchase the property. We've also, I know really more through the landmark, there's been some conversation about possible lease or purchase of the east side of the property. So that is something that we continue to look at as an option because as we all know, our long-range facility process is moving forward, and our, more than that, our very specific drawings now are moving forward about how we add a multipurpose room to Hollywood School and create the secured front office, which really doesn't impact space, but the multipurpose room does. And again, sort of our goal of achieving that separation of play and parking. So again, I believe it's the board's interest to continue to move forward with what we would call a special meeting, where the board would be present, have an opportunity to comment and add dialogue, as well as a presentation, a public forum way, where we would present the options that we are considering for that property. I know it feels, quite honestly, just a bit awkward without the shared participation of the HCA, but it seems that it's probably in the interest of our timing around our facilities projects to move forward with a community conversation about this. So with that, I'd really, I'd ask the board to take a look at the proposed dates up under the superintendent's report, that we look to identify some dates that were open on our District 96 calendar. And I've heard since that there might be some conflicts with the Riverside Brookfield High School calendar. But again, proposing probably at this point dates in October, so we identified October 8th, 22nd, and 23rd as possible evening meetings that I would want to see if there would be a board quorum able to be present for that.
I like the October 8th date. Just going to throw it out there, simply because it's sooner rather than later, but enough time to try to communicate the forum.
Could we, could we have that meeting at 7:30 on the 8th?
Certainly. It would give, I'm okay with that, and I think it would give people more time to do their evening dinners and then come and...
It's kind of difficult as a mom to get over, to have a 6:30 meeting and to have everyone have dinner. I think it's nice to give families a chance to eat and do what they need to do before they go over.
So you'd be fine with a 7:30 time?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah. I think it provides an opportunity for the community to come out and see what we've got and interact with both the board and hopefully HCA and any Village invitees to express preferences and move this process forward.
No, I mean, I can understand the awkwardness, Martha, that you have. I mean, there is some awkwardness there. But I mean, I guess the thing is, we don't really have much of an option. I mean, there's very little that we can do that unless we get like all parties involved. Because if Brookfield doesn't work with us and if the HCA doesn't work with us, we really are, it's going to be a very interesting, very, very tight configuration. I mean, and so I think it's, I think it's important that we have it sooner than later because we are, I mean, we're moving forward and we've got to decide what's going to happen.
And we'd like to include Hollywood, the multipurpose room and all that work with the contract that Ramash just mentioned.
Right.
So we're, all of the, our improvements at Hollywood want to be in parallel to the rest of the district.
Particularly to take advantage of cost savings.
Cost savings, and we have identified needs of getting some of those special, sorry, the extra off the stage and into real rooms.
So does October 8th work with everybody else? Works for me. I personally, as a mom, going to the fall orchestra concert at RV, so that one would be difficult for me personally.
Not on the 8th, on a different night?
Not on the 20th, I'm saying the 21st.
Oh, okay, okay.
The 8th, yeah, works for me.
What about Wesley? Wesley, does that work for you?
Yeah, the, I think it was the 23rd and the 8th that I sent to Martha the other day that I am available on both of those days.
Perfect. Great.
One point of concern, though, so I think, I think, and Martha mentioned that a lot of the communication from the HCA has been kind of through the landmark or not in the open. I believe HCA has stated they're having a meeting, what, in mid-October?
Mm-hmm.
So we wouldn't, if we're on the 8th, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have given them the chance to meet yet, or they wouldn't have met to, and there's no guarantee that they would take up our discussion at that point. But that is one thing to consider, is that we would be meeting before their meeting.
Or they could take the opportunity to see what we've, what we're talking about and proposing and think about it, and then come back to us after their own meeting.
Right. But I guess the thing is, though, too, is that they've said to us in the past that they've had plans and ideas, and they haven't come forward with it. And so while they've given us a date of like the, I believe it was the 16th or something that they would have, something, I mean, given the historical nature of what they've said about having previous plans, I can't, I question if they'll come to us with anything at that time. So I do think we should just move forward because we do have, I mean, we have to move forward with this, and we can't. Because if they come with us the 16th, then when we meet again, I mean, this is...
And it might provide a lot of beneficial information for their board to meet when they meet on the 16th.
Exactly.
I think.
Yes.
I just don't think we should delay any longer.
No.
So schedule a special meeting for October 8th at 7:30?
Please.
Yes.
All right.
And it'll be at Hollywood, correct, the school?
Sure.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think that's, I think that's...
No, I think we should go to Ames. Let's meet at Ames.
Howser, how about Howser?
I would prefer the United Center.
Nice try.
Yes, at Hollywood, for sure.
All right. So next then is New Business. First, we have Annual Review of Intergovernmental Agreements.
Right, so a conversation we had had, I think, a year ago was to bring our intergovernmental agreements forward annually for review. So it really doesn't require new action to re-approve them or anything, but if there's anything that people have concerns or uncomfortable about, I know in particular, there've been some questions about the security camera relay proposed by the Village. I do need to share that that has not been placed. And again, my understanding is from the Village, and I don't want to speak for the Village, that there's just been some delay in some of their processes and next steps around their surveillance camera system. So again, we have that agreement in place, but it is not something that has been enacted. The other two are about reciprocal reporting, mostly with our local police and fire, but really it's mostly police around student issues, crime in the community, in a way that we work together around both supporting and preventing things from happening. in a way that we work together around both supporting and preventing things from happening, but also being clear in our communication when unfortunate situations do arise. So again, these are pretty, the reciprocal reporting are fairly standardized and they are some that we've had in place now for several years. The security camera was a new one, but those are the three agreements that we have in place that we wanted to bring forward for the board if there's any discussion.
I guess I do have one question just regarding the reciprocal reporting. Just, do we have a sense of, I guess, how frequently either department asks for information? And then I guess also, I guess, and this is more subjective, is does there seem to be more collaboration now that we have these agreements than before?
So it's certainly hard for me to comment on before because I think some of those represent a time when I wasn't here. I do feel that our relationship with both Brookfield and with Riverside Police Departments just continued to improve over time. I think as we have, our principals, assistant principal, myself, have, I think, been able to form relationships and have conversations. In terms of frequency, it's hard to put a number on it. I would say maybe I talk to the chief of police, I would say, less than five times a year. But, you know, it might be somewhere around one or three, depending on the situation. Sometimes it's very informal, sometimes it's about a concern, something that I would like him to weigh in on. I think that we both really have developed a really positive, respectful relationship around understanding that we are a school and we may consider sort of student, student needs differently than the police department might consider them. And I think there's been a very nice and solid improvement in terms of, it's hard for me to quantify. It tends to be feel more qualitative to me.
And I guess, do we, do we know how often we share information with them? Or do we, are we tracking that?
Not formally tracking it. Again, I would kind of give it that, you know, sort of less than five configuration. So sometimes it's been a student safety. We've asked the police to do a well-being check somehow on a few occasions that I can think of. Maybe one or two a year where we don't have information from a child's family and they haven't called in and we, so there's been that kind of thing around student discipline. I think there's really been very little. You know, yeah, I, again, I would, the quantity feels, again, I would, I would put it as a small. I would put it as under five. Our police officers do, you know, informally show up to help us with traffic in front of the schools. And I think there might be informal communication, but it's not specific to a student or a particular need. But again, I think those are part of those relationship-building opportunities too. Does anybody see any need for these to be revised or reconsidered?
Well, I did wonder about the security camera relay. And I think, as you mentioned, it hasn't been implemented. I don't know that we have a good idea of when it's going to be implemented or if there's any plans for it to be implemented in the near future. I do wonder, does it make sense to withhold this or withdraw this until there's a better idea about when this will happen?
I think that's actually an excellent idea.
So it's something we could bring up, and we've had a new business discussion here tonight. We could bring it up as old business for action consideration. In the meantime, I'll certainly reach out to the Village.
I guess I would be interested in hearing from the Village in that regard.
Yeah, no, I mean, I agree with you, Dan. I mean, if we're having an agreement out there and it's not being implemented, I do believe that, I think I remember reading somewhere, actually in the landmark, that this is part of a broader agenda for the Village. But I mean, if this is not something that they're going to act on, I really just don't want this hanging out there sort of indefinitely if it's not being acted on. I think as the Village comes, like revises their plans and how they want to do this, I think we need to reevaluate this as well, especially if it's not going to be implemented this year. We're looking, and we're pushing it to next year because this whole agreement will have been, is over a year old now.
I'm okay with that. It feels a bit vague right now, so I agree with Dan.
Well, and to be clear, I guess if the Village comes back and is able to give us a timeframe and something, you know, with real achievable dates, then I think then it makes sense to revisit, renewing it. But again, if, right now, things seem pretty murky enough in the year.
I mean, I even go so far as to ask too, that to make sure that the scope of what originally was planned, where they're pointing to...
If it's...
If there's been such a delay, there's a possibility that there's a change. So we need to...
Yeah, that's true.
Sure. So let me gather some additional information from the Village and then bring it back to our next board meeting.
I don't disagree with any of the comments that were just made, but just for clarity purposes, the way I read this is specific to that relay, so I don't, we're not, I mean, this isn't opening up anything else other than the relay which isn't there. So like, is there anything in here that we need to be concerned about with the relay not being on there? That is hanging out here? Like any access to our property or anything like that outside of the relay that we've given them?
No, I don't think there's any vulnerability in the district or something, you know, waiting for installation or something like that. I think this was a, this was one where the board had a very split vote to begin with. And then now it hasn't been implemented. So let me gather more information about that and then bring it back.
Nope. Sounds good.
Okay. Next is the early learners tuition memo and recommendation.
Sure. And I may ask Pam Shaw to come up and help me with this. So when we looked at school fees, we realized last year, we looked at school fees, I believe, in January and February. And what we realized is early learner tuition payments or the agreement that families decide to be part of the early learners happens before, at an earlier time in the year. So waiting to look at school fees, this is part of sort of our all-encompassing school fees is really too late for families and for the communication we do. So we had agreed last year to bring this forward at a much earlier time in the years, which is why you're being asked to look at this here in September. And, you know, in general, I think Pam, if you could give just sort of, again, a very brief overview of early learners programming and why we do that kind of programming, and then your recommendation around the fees would be great.
So the early learners program is to provide the tuition-based general education peers to be the general education peers to be in compliance with guidelines about children learning in the least restrictive environment. So we do that through our early learners program. And children from the community pay tuition to be those general education peers. And the classes have approximately 10 children who pay tuition and approximately five children with IEPs, children with special needs, who have individualized education plans. So that is the reason why we have the early learners program. It's really done quite well. I believe when I did send out the memo, we had six openings this week. We filled another one with the tuition-paying students, so now we're down to five openings, which is what we had last year too. The morning spots are always more popular, afternoon spots is where we have those openings.
Pam, do you also, so they have a chart available, it's a chart you created about looking at some comparative data around.
Sure.
And you mentioned PFA only, which is preschool for all, but I think it's something that maybe one of the members is familiar with.
Some districts have preschool for all grants in their, in their school districts. So rather than have the tuition-paying students, they have grant-funded programs for students who are at risk to be those general education peers in the classrooms in their district. And then they do a ratio of so many students with IEPs as well and so many general education students, which the at-risk students are considered the general education students than in the district. And again, it's that 70 to 30 ratio, approximately 70% general education students with 30% students with special needs, which is the same percentage that we look at all the way up through high school for students.
In fact, it seems like, actually in your table, it seems like actually the majority of the districts in your, in your survey, 10 of the 18, are doing the PFA only. So could you talk about what the pros and cons? Actually, only about thirty, a third are doing what we seem to be doing. So could you talk about the pros and cons of each option?
We looked at the districts within that, the area that is often compared. Some of the LADZI districts do have preschool for all, but it's part of a, LADZI can do the preschool for all grants as well too. If you do a preschool for all grant on your own as a district, you have to have at least, if you write for a grant of 20 children, you have to guarantee that you have identified 20 at-risk children by November 1st. Grants are not submitted until June, and the approval doesn't happen until during the summer or sometimes it doesn't even happen until September. So then you're at the risk of, if you go all preschool for all, then you're at the risk of not having those general education peers to be in compliance with the state for your 70/30 ratio and providing the least restrictive environment for young children with special needs.
Some of these districts are larger than ours as well.
And it depends on the demographics of the community. Also, the other thing too is, it depends on the demographics of your community. So when you write a preschool for all grant, there's a lot of factors that are taken into consideration with the demographics. And then there is a point system as to eligibility for the program. It is also a type of a grant program where dollar-wise, I know years ago in writing the grants, they used to look at approximately $3,000 per child is what the state would give you. It varies though. The state determines what they'll give you, so you don't have that guaranteed dollar amount.
Okay. The other question I had on the table was the, there's two districts, I think it's Western Springs and Hillside, where it says no PFA or tuition. What's going on with those?
How do they comply?
Does that mean they don't have a preschool at all?
Yeah.
I don't know.
So that's, that, with that...
As far as I know, they only had the self-contained programs.
Okay.
For students with special needs and do not have the funded programs for the general education peers.
So I know it's a lot of detail to look at the tuition amount, but it all, is all factored in and considered.
Mm-hmm.
I guess I, the only question I really have is how is that tuition derived? I mean, how do we determine that tuition? Is that based on like...
That tuition was determined before I came. And I think they looked at, from my understanding, they looked at various area preschools. It's a little different because you want to make sure that you're not charging less than your other preschools where you're taking away from your community neighbors who have preschool programs as well. And you, ours tends to be a little bit more because we're five days a week compared to many of the community private preschools are two and three.
Yeah, I was thinking about my own children when I paid and it was less, but we only went twice.
Right, right. So if you look at that daily cost, it comes out to be about the same.
Right. No, I was just, like I said, I was just sort of wondering, how do we come up with that number?
And I don't know how they derived that originally. Typically, when school districts, they'll look at starting a tuition-paying program, they will look at other area districts around who have tuition-paying program. I would have to say closer to DuPage County where I worked previously, there are quite a few who have the tuition paying. So they may have gathered some information from there.
And we have not changed that number?
No, no.
Four, five, six?
This is the sixth year and it remains the same. It's been, but it seems like I've looked from time to time and the others, like community preschools and things have not raised their rates that much either. But I think at this time, it would be time to do a cost of living increase at least.
I think it absolutely makes sense to increase things by the rate of inflation because if you don't do that, then you're essentially cutting tuition costs, which I don't think makes sense. I had, I wanted to ask the board about an idea, which is to essentially do a, have the administration do a deeper analysis of the preschool program in terms of their cost structure, you know, and what, you know, what we're spending and the salaries, how many staff members we have, you know, how much money we're getting either in grants or tuition, what comparables are maybe in a larger group than what you have here. So just do more detailed analysis, very similar to what last year you guys did, something on the special education program. And I think on the finance committee side, I think it's very informative for us as a board to really understand, you know, what these various programs cost and how they're funded and how they compare to other programs in the area. So, but that's, that's obviously more work for the administration to do that. So it's something I think we, you know, should only pursue if there's an interest on the board. So I just wanted to ask people, you know, is that something that...
I think, what, sorry, dude?
No, actually, that's where I was sort of going with this because I want to sort of know how we determine these costs, is it just based on competition? I mean, I want to know, I'd like to know, does this actually cost like $5,000 or something? Or does it cost like $2,000 and it's like, we're charging too much?
Yeah, I think that makes perfect sense. And we just saw the budget with revenues versus expenditures and this fits within that.
And I think the thing to caution you is that we do always have to be careful the rate of tuition that we are charging because the whole purpose of this is to be in compliance in LRE. So we don't want to raise it to the point that we're discouraging families and not providing LRE and then not being in compliance with ISBE. We can also look at having further discussions with LADZI too, of sprinkling it in maybe, of having so many students be possibly, it may be easier to obtain grant for preschool for all going through LADZI who already has an established grant. But then, you know, it does change a little bit. Requirements of the program may change a little bit too through preschool for all.
Your points are, yeah, I think your points are well-taken. We don't, you know, we don't want arbitrarily raise the tuition to such a high level that we discourage people and, you know, there are other, it sounds like there are other options out there. But I think really, at this point, you know, it's from the board's perspective, I think it's more getting an understanding of what our cost structure is.
Of what it is right now.
You know, how it compares to others, where the money's coming from, where it's going. And, you know, that, I think that's very helpful for the board in sort of trying to, you know, sort of set these numbers because otherwise they're...
The thing I would not be able to tell you is because it's determined when the grants are awarded, I would not be able to tell you what the preschool for all, what we would get is.
But maybe we could look at what grant awards were in other districts, just as a piece of information.
And again, if we can try to find a district with similar demographics, we may be able to have some type of an idea.
I mean, also, I mean, to the point, I mean, the grants are great. Obviously, I'm not going to say I don't want them. But I think, know what the costs are independently of the grants. So if we don't get it one year, we know, well, we're going to have to spend so much money or... Exactly. I think it's absolutely essential for us to do that, just like last year with special education. It's a very, very informative overview to know how much we're spending in special ed, where the money's going, you know, and all the rest. It's very helpful, I think, for the board. So I think this is another area where I think, and it's not just special ed, it's not just preschools, that we should be drilling down through time over many of these different sort of expenditures we make.
And the PFA is determined by the number of at-risk children that we don't want.
I mean, they look at a lot of different factors of demographics, and it's a very...
That's an unknown for us.
But we might not be eligible for it, right?
Exactly, what we could pull or...
I guess, is there a way to give an approximate idea on that? If how many would be eligible and would that meet our needs in terms of students?
It can be, it can be tricky because you may have students who are eligible. You may have, and having dealt with the grant before in previous districts, you may have children that are eligible, but then again, it's a half-day program. And if the parents need a full-day program, they won't be able also to transport their child to the program. And then you're required to have 20 by November 1st. And so if you don't have that 20, you have to give back money at the end of the year of what you do.
Many, many people have trouble delivering a child during afternoon sessions. That's why no one wants the afternoon, even no matter what preschool you go to.
So outside of the possibility of a grant or whatever, I think all you have to say is, how much does this program cost? How much should be taken? And we're not saying that we want prices because it's...
Just to understand the cost of the program.
We're big picturing, we're understanding maybe a... A program we have to supply due for compliance reasons and it's just a good...
And also, you know, what the, you know, what a wider set of schools are that are, that are doing the tuition-based stuff. You know, you've got a couple in here, but most of them are the PFA, so it's kind of hard to get a sense for what's, you know, being charged.
I know.
Yeah, well, I found it interesting, I mean, just sort of looking at this, the force is like only 22. It's far less than everything else across the board, so. Right.
And some programs though, just, I mean, I think, I think they're four days a week.
Right, so there you are.
Yeah, it's really, it's hard to tell if the...
So it depends on the days per week sometimes too.
And I don't know if you're, like, I don't feel like this is something that has to be presented like next month.
Oh, no, no, I think that's...
This is going to be a while. I would suggest, you know, a year, a turn to dig in and...
Right, in the next three or four months.
But we would potentially move, so I know it's a new business item, so we'll bring it back for more overview, whether that's, it's kind of a finance and education both. We could bring it back at a COW or a board meeting. We might just look at the time you and Jim would need to do this analysis and then where it best fits. But in the meantime, I guess there is this question of, do we want to move forward next meeting to approve the increased tuition because there is...
The information goes out... The information goes out the...
Right, no, I'm not saying that we...
And that's for next year.
Right, just as we did with the fees. I'm not saying we...
Yeah, absolutely.
We, let's move forward with, my opinion is, let's move forward with this and let's do an analysis then for like next year, not for this year.
I like that.
And I think too, is, I mean, we can give you our budget information, but for me to even further look into, if you want me to do more analysis with preschool for all, that would take more time, so...
I think it says 90 is five days here.
Pardon?
I think it says River Forest is five days.
Five days?
So maybe, yeah, maybe we, that would be helpful when you give...
I thought there were four days at one type of...
You double-checked that because there is a double-check...
Yeah, maybe just whenever we hear about it, it'd be nice to know, you know, he's in a comparable week.
Right, great. And I did talk with them too when they started their program and I remember they have quite a few, I think, community preschool programs too. So sometimes people will lower costs in order to make sure that they have the compliance piece.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ben.
Okay. Next up is public comment.
Again, real quick, just thought about something while we were talking through that last one on the special meeting. Though, because we are trying to push so much of the community engagement, we talked about, like, I'll just call it a marketing plan. With this being three weeks out, are we going to be able to get an email or flyer or a postcard or something like that sent out to the community to, pretty quickly, to get this on people's calendars?
So, you know, using our own school messenger services is easy in terms of that reaches District 96 families, it doesn't reach the community at large. I will reach out to the village of Brookfield to see if there's anything I can do with their communication blast. Sometimes that works with villages and sometimes that doesn't. We can certainly also use kind of the old-school version of some signs, you know. We could ask if the HCA would post something. So, right, it is three weeks away. It won't be the most exhaustive community outreach, but hopefully people that are listening, hopefully we can continue to use the landmark also and then hopefully the HCA will reach out to its own membership too. But I can't guarantee that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we, we would be able to do something. I mean, if we want to print off a flyer on those door-to-door and stick my deal in mailboxes, we need to, I'm going to be disappointed if...
I'll print one for you, Wesley.
Wait, 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 we have that on record.
We've done some yard signs for kindergarten registration one year.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
It's hard to know the best way to get the word out. It continues to be a challenge when you're trying to reach beyond the school doors, you know, beyond our parents. And certainly we can say in the flyer that we encourage parents to reach out to their neighbors that they know don't have children in the schools.
But I also, but I also want to caution though that this, yes, while this, while we're looking at the Hollywood school, we are, this is a district initiative, just as we did for like Ames and just as we did for Blythe. This is a district initiative. And I guess I would just caution that if we're going to be focusing on communicating this out to Hollywood and doing this, like going door-to-door to Hollywood or doing something like that, I mean, we need then to like let the whole community know.
That's a good point, Dave. We have to treat, we have to be very diligent about never doing something for one part of the district or another. So I think you're right, if we were going to send out flyers, it would have to go to the entire district because there might be people who don't live in Hollywood who are just as interested.
Right, so you're right.
Because we're, this is a significant...
Exactly, sure.
Wesley, are you agreeing?
I didn't say I was, or that.
So good point, though.
Okay, then at this time, is there any public comment? If not, future meeting dates are October 2nd, Committee of the Whole meeting at 7:00 PM at Howzer. October 16th is a regular business meeting, again at Howzer. Board may enter into closed session at 6:30 if necessary. November 6th is Committee of the Whole at Hollywood Elementary. November 20th, regular business meeting at Howzer. December 4th, 2019, Committee of the Whole at Ames. December 18th is regular business meeting, 7:00 PM at Howzer. There is nothing else, meeting is adjourned.